It's not allowed during budget. What can I say?
All right, we're gonna go ahead and get started. Welcome to the October fourteenth. Made it a whole. We are firmly in budget season. So, thank you. Before I introduce Carrie, I just want to say to the presenters, since we're hearing from three departments tonight, if you can go lighter on your accomplishments or successes and heavier on your budget ask R for this millennium, I would really appreciate it. With that, I'm gonna turn it over to Carrie.
Thank you so much. So, this evening kicks off our department presentations of our preliminary budget. And the slide deck that could be shown, the calendar shows, this is our first meeting of the department presentation. So, it will be Public Works, Parks and Recreation, and Police this evening. We also have our second public hearing this evening at our council meeting. And then the rest of the calendar, we have department presentations next week as well. So, Martin is first up, and I will hand it off to you.
Thank you, Carrie. Good evening, Council President Prince and members of the city council. Council President Prince, I know your message is loud and clear. I know I have a large slide deck, but we're gonna go through this quickly.
I appreciate it.
So, tonight, we're gonna review the scope and breadth of the Public Works Department's functions and responsibilities. We're gonna talk a little bit about, really briefly, about the major accomplishments for 2023-24, because it sets the stage for the new and ongoing programs for our 25-26 budget year, both for our operating budget and our capital improvement budget. So, as you can see, the Public Works Department consists of 209, proposed 209.5 FTEs, largest department in the city, obviously spread out over five separate divisions, including airport facilities, maintenance, operations, traffic systems, and our utility systems. Here's just a sample of the major components that Public Works operates, maintains, and manages. See, the airport, obviously, 170-acre facility, over almost 120,000 operations last year. 362 of those operations were Boeing aircraft takeoffs and landings, and operate a total number of 70 leases at the airport. So, 70 leases that we have responsibility for. Here in our traffic safety elements, you can see, obviously, the large number of components that go together, put together, manage our traffic operation systems in the city, including over 5,600 streetlights, 144 traffic signals, almost 20,000 street signs. And one other component of the folks in transportation maintenance that they take care of is all the vehicle radios in the city. So, there's over 1,700 radios that they maintain, including radios for the police department, both maintenance as well as the installation and operation, maintenance activities for those particular radio sets. Our statistics, what we maintain, streets over 318 miles of street centerlines, 753 lay miles, and eight miles of alleys. This gives you an idea of what our 2020 pavement index condition was. This may look familiar to the council, because this is one of the elements that we used to make the case for the transportation benefit district. We need to continue to make investments in our pavement in order to maintain our pavement rating of 73 or 73 higher. Right now, we're in a fair category, and so, we want to make sure that we don't drop down into that lower level of that curve there, where your cost of bringing those street elements back up increases substantially. So, here's a little bit of information about our refuse systems that we run through contract with Public Services, over 26,000 accounts, over 45,000 tons of garbage collected, almost 13,000 tons of recycling collected, and little almost 14,000, almost 15,000 tons of organics. As well as our utilities, what we have, we have a very vast utility network. If you look at that in terms of piping systems, it's almost 700 to 800 miles of pipes between water, wastewater, and surface water that we've required to maintain. We've got a large number in the water system, wells, reservoirs, a spring, treatment facilities, pump stations, PRVs, which are pressure-reducing valves, in order to so we don't blow out the water, pipes in people's houses, over almost 4,000 fire hydrants, 12,000 valves. Anyway, a lot of stuff in the water system, a lot of lift stations, 20 lift stations in the wastewater system, mechanical lift stations to force sewage uphill into the main line, and then our surface water facility, you see 294 miles of pipe, 479 facilities, almost 17, 18,000 catch basins, and three pump stations. In our facilities, we almost maintain just a little shorter million square feet of facilities. We contract about $237,000 square feet to, for the 200-mill building and parking garage, but in-house, we maintain almost 650,000 square feet of buildings. Based on our area per technician, that's 91,000 square feet of space per technician per day. You can see the kind of things we do. In addition to the typical carpentry work and plumbing and electrical work, we also have 346 cameras, 30 panic buttons, 19 fire alarm systems, 172 badge readers, HVAC system. You can see the number of fixtures and restrooms that we can maintain, and the completed work orders. Last year, they completed 5,976 work orders. So, just a brief review of our accomplishments, some things we've gotten done in the last year. I think partnered with Sound Transit and WashDOT to implement regional transportation projects. We adopted the electric vehicle transition plan, and we got a grant from the Washington State Department of Commerce for EV charging stations. The airport completed their office relocation from under the tower, which was a seismically unstable building, to this building here now that's at the southwest end of the airport. You can see the entry-level office renovation. We've also done some, brought up, updated our lease rates for the airport for hangars and tie-downs, also really, I think, because the transportation committee's been seeing the leases that we've been bringing through for updates on those, as well as we've got a $1.6 million grant for Taxway Alpha project. Our folks in maintenance have been really active. You can see have done almost 2,000 tons of asphalt repairs over the last, well, this year alone, and not, the year's not over with yet, almost 3,000 last year. One thing for note on the vehicle replacement, we've only replaced 27 vehicles in 2023 and 17 in 2024. A lot of it has to do with availability, the vehicles for commercial use and construction use just aren't manufactured like they were. They have been making those vehicles, nor for the, you know, user market, the, should I say residential, but the non-commercial sector. So, we haven't been able to get as many vehicles. It's taking longer to get them, and we order them. So, we're not seeing our replacements happen this frequency, which means more cost and more time on our maintenance folks to keep the existing vehicles operating. We've received a nice award from the National Association, or I'm sorry, North American has this Materials Management Association for our shift green oil and oil recycling program. Linda Knight was there to accept that award. Also done a lot of work in terms of our special recycling events, our commercial organics and recycling waste prevention program, the electric vehicle implementation plan, working on Envision, which I'll talk a little bit in a minute, litter prevention, and we did our first Halloween costume swap last year, working with the second year of this this year, to provide an opportunity for those that don't have the funds to buy new costumes to go ahead and come in and look at swapping out an old one for a new one. Great program. In our construction side for transportation, we got the Lake Washington Speed Cushion Project done. Park Avenue North, we're anticipating this because 2024 isn't done yet. We anticipate this to be done this year, knock on wood. Also, thanks to council's foresight, we were able to get Transportation Benefit District passed, so we've now gotten 3.5 million available funding for the coming fiscal year to invest in our streets and our sidewalks. Ranear Avenue South Corridor Improvement Project Phase Four is progressing. We anticipate this to move into 2025 and finish by the winter of 2025, and we developed our comprehensive walkway and our 10-year preservation program, all as a subset of the Transportation Benefit District. In the utility side, we had our first Envision project. Envision is an award program, or I should say an award program. It is a recognition program for environmental stewardship. It is put on by the Institute for Sustainable Infrastructure, which is a joint venture of the American Society of Civil Engineering and the American Public Works Association. In it, we look at various criteria in terms of how you develop a project to make it most sustainable ways possible, from the use of materials, from the sourcing of materials, to the types of construction techniques you use. Our 16th and Jefferson Project received the verification, so that's our first level of award, and we're gonna look forward to do that in the future as a way of showing that we are trying to follow the council's goals of sustainability integration into our operations, as well as into our construction activities. There were a lot of really big projects going on. Monroe Avenue Northeast Infiltration Project, that project is moving very well ahead of schedule. It was a large project, 21.5 million. We grant-funded it with $13.23 million worth of funding. Great project, almost done. They're finalizing it now, so we're ready for the 2025, 2024, 2025 storm season. The Burn Avenue Avenue South Sidewalk and Utility Replacement Project, over a million dollars. We did over list stations, 12 list stations that were upgraded for $1.4 million. The West Hill Booster Pump Station improvements and standby emergency power, it's almost half done, as well as continued work on the Ranear Avenue South Project for the utilities infiltration there. And there's a list here that goes on. One of the one things I want to really point out, and kudos to the folks in utility, almost 27% of the funding we received of the $34 million worth of expenditures was grant-funded. So, great kudos to the folks in utilities for going out and looking at the opportunities that are available there for grant funding and finding a way to stretch our available dollars even further to get our projects done. So, in the facility side, accomplishments that we accomplished there with Family First Community Center, which I'm sure you're all very aware of. And it was a great project that we really get done this last budget year, our energy service company's Phase Three project. This is really looking at and replacing infrastructure, the HVAC systems for the Renton Community Center, the Public Works Buildings that are old, not functional, creating a very uncomfortable space for folks. And also the implementation of 14 on-call contracts for emergency repair. It sounds like minor stuff, but we have a lot of work that has to be done for emergency repair, and having to go out each time and setting up a contract when that emergency occurs. Having this done in advance and done through our proper contracting procedures really helps us. So, when we do have those emergencies, we're able to respond to them very quickly. So, I want to talk about now the preliminary budget proposals for 2025-26. All right, let me get my place. One of our big additions this year is really to add an asset management program. You know, I can't emphasize enough the importance of asset management. We have over billions of dollars in infrastructure in this city, between our pipes, systems, our three-pipe utilities, our buildings, our airports, our streets, our pavements, our pump stations, our reservoirs. It's a lot of assets that we have to maintain, and how we track those assets, and how we look at the maintenance we involve in, and how we know when they're, we're getting to the end of useful life, so we can replace them before they fail, as opposed to when they fail. All this is part of a really integral components of an asset management system. It's really, we've got some other things that are coming up. We're gonna, retirement of a lot of long-time employees, meaning we're gonna have a lot of loss in the five years. We've got some very long-term employees that are looking at retire. People have worked over 40, 45 to 50 years in the city that'll be leaving. That institutional knowledge will go with them. We don't have a place to put that. It's really helped us identify the highest priority needs based on a multitude of factors, as things such as conditions, repair history, it looks at the types of materials that we have, all the things that we can put into a database and use to make those determinations on where best to spend the scarce amount of dollars that we have to invest every year in infrastructure. Because clearly, we don't have enough to make everything done. Either we don't have enough to do everything we do, or we don't have enough people to execute everything we need to get done, to keep everything up to date. So, we have to look at ways to prioritize and strategically make those investment, so that we can maximize the length of our existing systems, but keep them up to date and repair them as needed, so we can continue the continuity of services that we provide. The increase in training budget, this is a $65,000 a year request. That is really due to the, our folks that we have used in the past to train our maintenance workers to be commercial drivers. We've done that in-house, but those folks have either left, or they've moved up to supervisor levels. When they're moved up to supervisor level, we can't continue to have them do that training, because it's a long-term training. The other thing is when we lose, when we have somebody in for training and use our own in-house people, we lose two people, not just the trainee, but also the trainer. So, we've looked at increasing our budget this year for going outside with that. We found a company that's here in Renton that will allow us to, that's a commercial truck driver's training school. They will train them in-house here, in this, I should say, in city, not in-house, but in city. And then the training will occur nearby in Taquillo. So, we'll lose that one person for the time period it takes them to get their license, and then they'll move forward. It's about $5,000 per person, but in that time, we'll get that commercial driver available, and we won't lose two staff in that process. The other thing is we're adding, looking at adding professional services for the restroom cleaning at city parks, and a half million dollars a year. We have been working with the union. We have, I'm very pleased to say, indicate that we have assigned MOU with the union now that allow us to move forward for the cleaning of the restrooms up until December 31st, 2026, at which time we'll revisit that issue, aside whether to continue forward with that or look at another means. This has all come about as a result of COVID. When we lost COVID, we stopped the supplemental employees that we had because of the continuous concerns about funding issues. We lost all our supplemental employees, as well as an agreement in the contract that limited the amount of time our supplemental employees could work. So, as we started to come back, we've not been able to secure employees to be able to clean the restrooms. This year, we needed about 17 employees to, supplemental employees to clean the restrooms. We were able, the most we were able to get at one time is four. So, we've had to take our staff, our existing custodial class staff, and have them help to help try and keep the bare minimum number of restrooms open. But that takes away from the work that we have to do on our other facilities. Takes away from the cleanliness that we have, the disinfecting that we need to do. So, we want to make sure that in order to keep ourselves going, we sort of segmented this into professional contract for restroom cleaning, and then let our custodial personnel go back and do the things that we need to do to get to the level of the cleaning that's become expected from the community. So, the position change is that we have the asset management positions. Talked about the asset management program earlier. We have two positions that we're requesting. One is an asset, Asset Management GIS Program Manager, essentially somebody to oversee our asset management program, the implementation of this, on the integration of this into our operations. The other one is an asset, GIS Asset Management Analyst. Right now, we have three GIS technicians, or should I say GIS analysts, that work for the utilities, but we have nothing for our general fund activities. We don't have anything for our transportation group. We don't have anything for the airport or for facilities. So, part of this, we've cobbled together is some funding from a previous position, a halftime secretary that we had in utility, will be used to offset the other halftime that we need for the asset manager. The other technician, we're gonna fund with a combination of general fund, airport funds, and facility funds, which is a combination of the above. But it's a way to help cobble that together in order to get the positions we needed. The Water Quality Treatment Plant Operator, we have three treatment plant operator positions in the city. We have one that's been vacant for a year, as a result of the supervisor in modern treatment, water quality, who retired. One of the technicians was promoted. We've tried to recruit for that position. It's very hard to recruit to that position. There are a limited number of qualified treatment plant operators in the state. Part of it is because you have to have the experience running a particular type of plant. And so, what we found is a way we're gonna be able to do that, meet our needs, is to grow our own. And this says a treatment plant operator, but is actually a plant operator, trainee position. What this allows us to do is put somebody in a trainee position, move them up, allow them to get the required education, as well as they're required to work two years under an operator at the plant, before they're able to operate the plant on their, operate the plant on their own without close supervision. So, by having this trainee position that allows, sets it up for the going forward when we lose the next operator, to have somebody to move into those slots, or at least gear it up to move into those slots without having to try and look at that on the open marketplace. The water surface, wastewater, surface water maintenance supervisor, this is a position that we currently have one supervisor in that area, oversees 23 employees, including the operation of our wastewater treatment pump stations, as well as the systems for the wastewater, as well as the stormwater system. It's two large, a scope, span of control for one supervisor. They have a manager. The manager needs to focus on other things, and so, this will allow us, having that additional supervisor position will allow us to split the crews to where we have a much more manageable 10 employees per supervisor ratio, or thereabouts, that'll allow us to better manage that particular system going forward. Civil Engineering Three in 2026, this is the second year. This is a position we're looking at for our recycle water system. As the council was where they entered into agreement with the King County Water System, do a study on the implementation of a recycle water system. King County has the water, has the plant. Where can we put it? Where can we utilize it? And so, we're looking at the development of a recycle water system in the valley, so it's outside of our Ochford Protection Areas, sphere of influence, but allow us also to take advantage of that water and reduce the amount of potable water that some of these folks are using for cooling towers, for irrigation, potentially could even use for restroom flushing, toilet flushing. These things can all be, if we develop a system that will allow us to reduce that, that means less potable water that we'll need. There are times now where in the summertime, we have to use city Seattle water, because we don't have enough water between our wells and our treatment plant system. If we could reduce some of that water use in the valley area through the use of recycled water, that will then allow us not maybe to buy the water from Seattle, and then have our own sort, be able to utilize just our own sources only. Increase in ITS Part-Time Secretary One. This was, we currently have a halftime secretary in transportation, the Intelligent Transportation System Area. It's really, again, that's a group that's about 12, 13 employee, maintaining all our traffic signals, street signs, pavement markings, our fiber optics, and they just don't have enough time. We're spending a lot of supervisor time doing administrative work that we could, made better use with another part-time secretary. So, we're really looking at, not another part-time secretary, sorry, increasing that part-time secretary full-time. That'll then give us the resources, the administrative support they need to be able to continue with their operations. Then we talked about two facility technicians. One added in 2025. We're gonna basically change an existing maintenance custodian position over to a facilities technician, because that's really where our needs are at. As we talked about last year, in 2023, I think we did almost 5,900 work orders. In 2023, did 6,120, 24, so it's 10,000 over two years, but there's another 9,000 that we weren't able to get to. So, it's really a large volume of work that we have, and we didn't have the resources to do it. So, by adding this technician in 2025, that'll allow us then to help offset some of that work in 2025. And then we're asking for a second technician in 2026. Obviously, gonna take time to gear up and move, but allows us then to sort of phase that approach over time, while allowing us to continue to look at ways to improve our operations, and make sure we're able to address those maintenance concerns that exist out there and address those open work orders. And finally, we will look at converting an existing lead maintenance custodian to a custodian supervisor. One of the things we're looking at doing is we go back and we can take out the restroom cleaning from our existing custodians, is looking at moving into more evening hours for our custodians, so that they're working here at the time when people aren't here. They're able to move more freely through the room. It's not as disruptive to the work environment. It also allows them more quickly move through the facilities and get them clean. By doing this, we need another supervisor handling the evening time work to oversee those crews that would work at night. And so, that's where we're gonna take this existing lead maintenance custodian, move it to a custodial supervisor position. In addition to the operating budget requests, we have 2 million annually for our transportation benefit program for the street, for the sidewalk program, and 1.5 million for pavement preservation. We've got a couple other requests on here, which I'll go through a little later. Just a number of, and again, this is a tremendous work from everybody in Public Works. We received over $49 million in grants in the 2023-24 two-year budget year. Our folks are very active, did a lot of great work in terms of getting grants to implement some of these key infrastructure projects for the city. Again, another, just another sampling of the large volume of work that these folks and the money we've been able to get for this. And the grants received from 25-26, we know already we've received. We've got other applications out there, but right now, we know we've got at least 5.5 million coming in next two years for various improvement projects from Airport, Senior Center, Henry Moses Aquatic Center, the Pavilion Conversion Project. These are just the preliminary ones we have now. And again, we're continuing to look for grant funding to implement the infrastructure projects that we have. Just a little bit about what we're looking at, our goals. I think the big one, we talked about asset management system. The other one is we're looking for the chief accreditation through the American Public Works Association, and accredited Public Works Agency. This means that there's a certain standard that we've met, along with other public works agencies, to show the best management practices up in the industry. It's not necessarily how we do it, or what we do, but it's also how we do it, in terms of having policy procedures and backups. So, it really is a way for us to validate the great work that our cures are doing. The airport, again, operating budget, you see a little bit more in terms of expenses in 2025 than in 2026. Our operation costs between operations and capital exceed the revenue by about $250,000, but in 2026, we exceed that. Our revenues exceed our expenditures by 483,000. We certainly have substantial reserves in the airport fund, so this doesn't seem like a big glitch for us at this point in time at all. Capital funding for the airport includes our securing a siding study for the new control tower. We know we need a new control tower. It's seismically unsafe, which is why we moved our staff out from underneath it. But that still doesn't make the folks that sit in the tower any safer. So, it's one of the things that we need to do is look at funding for, securing funding for a new control tower. We're looking at our FAA Taxway Alpha Construction Phase One and Phase Two. This is the new construction of the taxiway. We're looking at fog ceilings, restriping the airport, and some other tie-downs and improvements that exist along this. It's just, again, investment in infrastructure in order to keep it up to date and moving forward. Our Maintenance Services Division, very large group of individuals, 95 people, a lot of operating costs and capital. These are things, not just personnel, but supplies, materials, it's the cost of chemicals, everything we need to run the treatment plants, the energy we need to run our systems. It's a very large operation there. Their goal is really to keep, continue to keep our right-of-ways free and clear litter. Looking at our water loss in the maintenance area, we've unfortunately been tracking water loss that's exceeding somewhere between 12 to 17% of our water we can't account for based on sales. Some of that may be numerical errors, but it's also areas where we look to see leaks in the system, areas where we know we've got some water. We've got a reservoir up in the Sunset area that's leaking, that's unscheduled to be replaced, but it's still, that's one of the water losses we have. Those are the kind of things we need to tighten up and make sure that our water isn't leaving the system where it shouldn't. And then we'll continue to pave our streets, you know, with the acquisition of the concrete truck we got this year, based on council's approval. We've been able to do some sidewalk work now without having to wait two, three weeks in advance, because we can, you know, take out the old sidewalk, put the forms in, get the concrete that day. All we do is drive a truck to a plant, gets there, and then we can deliver that and get those work done in a cost-effective manner, as opposed to waiting two weeks where we'd have to take away the, strip away the old sidewalk, put in the forms, and try and schedule a concrete truck to come out. We don't have that issue anymore, thanks to your foresight. And in fleet maintenance, we're gonna continue to provide for our vehicles and equipment, but also begin the integration of electric vehicles in the city fleet. We've acquired, at this point in time, four vehicles so far. We have three more on order, electric vehicles. Five of them in the police department. I'm really proud of the work that those guys have worked on to accept vehicles. They're not for emergency operations, but they are looking to integrate them in their non-emergency operations as they can. We also have a couple of vehicles that we use for our staff, our electric vehicles now. So, we're, you know, we're working our way there based on availability, and that will continue to increase over time. Solid Waste Sustainability, we've got some big one coming up here, is to begin the procurement process for a new solid waste collection contract and preparation for new services in April 2027. Our existing contract with Republic Services expires in the end of, end of March 2027, so we need to bring in a consultant on board, start preparing the plans and the specifications for that particular contract, as well as the things that we want to see. I think some of the things we've been disappointed in, and honestly, in our, in our contract with Public Services, is we have goals in there, but we have no teeth in which to implement those goals. I think we're looking for that. We want, because of the need to really get out there and emphasize We want to, because of the need to really get out there and emphasize the investment in recycling and composting, we haven't been seeing that. And we really want to make sure there are some teeth there to make sure that happens. And so especially as, again, as King County starts to try and whittle its way away from landfills, because of the closing of landfill, we need to try and increase the amount of recycling, amount of composting. We really need to up our effort in those areas. And I think this contract has been one of the ways to help move that forward with some motivating goals for that. And continue again with our electrification investment strand. I'm sorry, electrification investment strategic master plan, it's a mouthful for me to say, apologize. And then our city advocacy, continue to work for K 4 C, Metropolitan Solid Waste Advisory Committee, Mizwak, and then the Re Plus Task Force, and other opportunities arise to make sure that city input on these countywide programs is there. Transportation, again, 32, that includes both the capital side as well as the operating side. You know, we've got increased funding for our capital improvement program this year. A couple of them I want to point out, based on the survey, the budget survey that we saw sent out to the residents, safety was in the integral components. One of the things we're really looking at, our comprehensive Vision Zero Safety Action Plan, we're going to develop that. Our bridge inspection repair, obviously we need to make sure our bridges are inspected and up to date, certified, so that we can get them repaired as needed. Our roadway safety and guardrail program, continue to make sure that as things of accidents occur, we have the funding available to replace those guardrails, improve those. Again, street overway and sidewalk program, all funded by the TBD, but traffic calming program, we found that that's something that's been affected. We've got a lot of requests for those programs. We haven't had the funding, so we're implementing an ongoing program for that. And our traffic safety program, which is start looking at more pedestrian crossings, more rapid rectangular flashing beacons, anything we can do to increase the safety for pedestrians and bicyclists. This is kind of a low-cost area, which to make investments to improve that, those areas. Just briefly, the capital programs, again, traffic safety program, we talked about that small, those are pedestrian crossings at Mark Crosswalks, about a $500,000 request each year. Traffic calming program looks like a $335,000 request for each year. We've got some speed cushions better proposed for a couple of different streets along here. We've got about eight or nine requests now, so we're going to be able to work through those in the next couple of years. Obviously, as we get a couple done, more continue to get added to the list. So it's going to be an ongoing request for funding. Our roadway and guardrail program, again, those are things, as people hit them, we need to have the funding to get those replaced damaged because we aren't always successful in getting them back through insurance. Our Oaksdale Southwest Preservation Project, this is one where Oaksdale between Southwest 34th and Southwest 16th, that section of Oaksdale, we've got some money funded for preservation. We've got a grant available from PSRC as well as some additional requests that we need to, to make some improvements to that funding area. And then continue to work on the Rainier Avenue Project Phase Five Corridor. So this is the last phase of Rainier Avenue Project. Once we complete Phase Four, this is a section that essentially runs along the airport all the way to North City Limits. And we're looking at a funding request for 499 in 2025 that will also look into to get some grant funding for as well. We think it's a very good candidate for that. In addition, our Vision Zero Safety Action Plans, we talked about this, it's really to look at setting ourselves up for the future and the investment where there's a lot of federal plan funding is going to be tied to these Vision Zero Act safety plans. And they need to make sure that we have identified the elements that we need to put in place in order to ensure the safety of our pedestrians, bicyclists, and drivers. And then projects that are under construction, as you can see, we've got a lot of stuff that's moving forward now, as you're very well aware of, those of you on the transportation and on the finance committee who hear us come in on a regular basis. Our utility system division, again, got a lot of work that they have in there, our operations side as well as our capital side. Here's just a lot of water utility projects we're working on, not large, all big scale, but a lot of pipeline replacement, a lot of maintenance and maintenance of projects that we have that need to make in terms of store areas. It's sort of a map that shows you where a lot of these projects are at. They're stretched out all over the city, between water main extensions, our new six million gallon reservoir in the Highlands, water main replacements on Northeast 12th Street, the Windsor Hill Water Main Replacement, the Rolling Hill Reservoir Recode. So what emergency power to our South Talbot Pump Station, emergency power to West Hill Pump Station. So again, these are all essential elements to operate in our system. Our Highland 435 Zone, this is a reservoir project, this pipeline project that's going to go forward. We've got money in the budget for 2324, but that's going to be continued ongoing over the next year or two. Our water, wastewater utility budget, so again, about $8 million over the biannual budget process. The big one is the sanitary sewer hub replacement, as well as our Kennedy Dale Lake Line. You can see where these projects are for our wastewater division are located, again, various components all over the city. Kennedy Dale Lake Lines, you're well aware, we're working at replacing, taking that lake line that's in the lake and removing it onto dry land before the project fails. And we're not able to get in there, we can't get in there, repair it, there's not, we can't get in there and inspect it because of the sags in the line and the degradation of that line over time. And this, you know, this is a project that was built in 1971, so it's, it's near, it's at the end of its useful life and we need to replace that before it fails. Certainly in Lake Washington, the potential impacts, both to the environment and to recreational users there, is something we need, we are very conscious of and why we're moving forward with this. Our septic to sewer program is a new one we're looking at. We know we have a number of folks that are in septic, have septic systems, especially on the east side, the old, the newer areas that we've annexed, shouldn't say the newer areas, newer to the city, there are older areas of the county that allowed septic. And you can see where we've got public sewer systems along there. We've got people who are adjacent to public sewer lines, but don't have the money to replace them. And so it's not that we're going to do it for them, it's trying to find a way to incentivize them to help join the program. Lots of incentives we can find, we can look at, you know, working with grants. We haven't worked out all the elements of the program, that'll be something we'll be coming to council with in 2025, but it is something we want to put some money in place now to start the process and look at that because we know the needs there. We've heard the need from the community and we haven't had any way to address that. So this is our first step in that process. Our surface water, again, the very active surface water program, not as active as last year with the completion of the Monroe Avenue Project, but still a lot of work to be done. A lot of it focused on maintenance and operations and cleanup of our sewer line, of our degrading stormwater system, because these are all corrugated metal pipes that have worn out. And so now we're having to start cleaning these up or get crushed. These are all things that we need to do to make sure that we basically keep our maintenance activities up and maintain compliance with our MPDS requirements. This is kind of an example of our surface water map. You can see there we've got projects all over the city. Copper Ridge, this is one where you can see where the project itself, it's going to replace an existing poor line, metal pipe that's in poor condition, is eliminate the flooding on the end of that cul-de-sac that affects the residents in that particular area. Facilities, again, we are asking for more than $400,000, $4 in 2026. That's an error on our part. What that adds, about $400,000 that we're asking for in 2026. You see, we've a lot of improvement projects in our capital areas. You can see degradation of some of the facilities here, the conditions that we're having to work on. These are things that we need to make some investments on in order to keep them up and running before they fall apart on us. And you can see a list of money, projects are included in the next biannual. These include the senior center facility improvement projects, the energy savings projects, we've done some energy saving projects, City Hall before, now we're at the RCC as well as City Yards, and we're moving back into some, looking at, as we continue to find ESCO projects and funding, we'll continue to look at ways to improve that to optimize our HVAC controls, our exterior lighting. We're looking at our relocation, reconfiguration, security upgrades for our centralized customer service hub downstairs. And then the Henry Moses Aquatic Center renovation projects includes the activity pool renovations, splash pad removal, air configurations, concession office upgrades, and locker room enhancements. So our project for 2026 includes renovation on the historic, Renton Historical Museum, the Pavilion Conversion Project, the 200 mil building compliance and modernization projects, and the City Hall structural repair upgrades. You can see the picture in the lower right-hand corner, that's the parking deck at City Hall with that cracking like that, doesn't bode well for the concrete, underneath the concrete and steel underneath it, when the water intrusion gets in there, starts to rust, rust the steel, which means it's falling, which means you reduce structural integrity. So those are the things we need to get fixed. Additional projects that we have are working on public workshops, the Carco Theater upgrades, boathouse improvements. That's boathouse improvements is really safety and security issues. We've got a fire sprinkler system that's non-functional, fire alarms that are non-functional. We've got our utilities there that are tied to Boeing, they were never converted over, so we need to get those converted over to us because when Boeing shuts down, all of a sudden we have no utilities at that location, no way of controlling that. We're also looking at Renton Community Center upgrades and repairs, and our hybrid neighborhood gym center, gym floor replacement. So our water rates for 25, 26, talk a little bit about that. This is our average monthly single bill. We're looking at a 2% increase in water in 2025 and 0% increase in 2026. In the wastewater side, we're looking at 0% increase in 2025 and a 2% increase in 2026. In our surface water, we're looking at 3.5% increase each year. Overall, it's a 1.5% increase in the overall bill, essentially about a buck 35 to a buck 30 per year. And you can see the increase from currently, an average single family rate would be about 88, 28, that's going to go to 89, 62 in 2025 and 90, 91 in 2026. We ran this through our, our model, our computer model that we have our rate consultant on, looked at all the capital components, all the investments that we need to make in our city. From the capital side as well as our operating costs, and while it didn't necessarily warrant a 2% increase in our water or our wastewater, what we suggested, we need to do that in order to keep up with inflation. And I'll show you the next slide. This is, this is the, this development charges for water, wastewater, and surface water. This is new development charges, again, going up relatively minus minor amounts. But this is what I wanted to show, the utility rates versus inflation. You can see that overall historical inflation over 10 years has been 3.7%. Our surface water has only been doing 3%, our wastewater 2%, and our water is only 0.6%. So if we didn't enact a rate increase over the next few years for water and wastewater, we fear that we'll continue to get behind the ball as we see an escalation cost of construction, as well as the operating costs of machinery, equipment, and materials. So therefore, that's why we're recommending the 2% for water in 2025 and then 2% in 2026 in wastewater. And this is kind of gives you an idea of our 2024 monthly utility bill comparison. As you can see, even with a small increase amount, will still be one of the lower cost comparable to our neighboring cities and the joint, the combined utility bills for water, sewer, and stormwater. In the single family solid waste rates, we're looking at a 6% for single-family households in 25 and 26, 3.9% for commercial multifamily, and 2% 3% for roll-off. This is an overall increase of 4.7%. As council recall, in 2021, we brought you the fact that our single-family households were subsidized substantially by our commercial and roll-off operations to the tune of over a million dollars a year. We talked about a phased approach to getting it down there. Through this 6% increase by 2026, we'll have it at a half million dollar subsidy per year, which was what was the target we had set. So these rates will get us in line with that goal that we had set back in 2021 when we brought it back to realign our rates to make sure they were fair and both to the businesses and to the multi, and to the multifamily, as well as the single-family roll-off. As you can see, our rates have not increased substantially. They've gone up, you know, 2023 were 7.2%, 2024, 7% overall, that was the overall rate impact. This is 4.7, so less than in the previous two-year period. And at that, I am happy to answer any questions.
Mr. President.
Nicely done, nicely done, Martin. Councilman Press.
Thank you, Martin. Thank you very much for your presentation. It was actually a great presentation. And let me repeat this, it was a great presentation because you answered most of my questions that I already had during your presentation. However, I still have a couple of them. One is in page three, 87, which say that increased professional services for solid waste collection contract by 1.5 million annually. Remind me, what is this?
That's because of the rate increase for the Republic Services as well as the cost increase for disposal at the King County Landfills. And then we have another $100,000 in there, we have for a consultant for the, plus with the preparation of our plans and specifications for the new solid waste contract coming up in 2027.
Thank you very much.
Any other questions? Yes, Councilmember Earl Howery.
I have two questions. The first is with regard to the CIP investment in the 200 mil building. My, my first inclination is to say, why are we investing in that? Are we still trying to sell, sell, sell or develop it? And is that just required health and safety improvements that are required for continued use? Or are we actually trying to improve the conditions of the building to make it more attractive to sell it or what?
Part of this is to take a look at what our needs are. We currently don't have enough, based on space studies that we're currently undertaking now, we don't have enough space to cover all our operations. We were crammed in terms of the police department, they don't have all their folks here. They're split between a couple of different facilities, including 200 mil. We don't have enough space for the folks upstairs and planning and our C E D and Parks Recreation, they're crammed on top of each other as well. And this is when we're working at, you know, on a hybrid, you know, staffing system. So our concern is the ability, I mean, I can talk about the fifth floor and I can talk about each floor, the courts are kind of crammed. As you get through each floor, you find that we just don't have enough room in this building to handle the staffing needs we have now, but also staffing needs we're going to have in the future. When we, when we stopped the wholesale of the 200 mil bill, and we took a look at it, we had a consultant come in and take a look at it. For about $15 million, we can make, 15 to 20 million dollars, we're going to make an investment and bring that facility up to standard, which would give us almost another 100,000 square feet. So by doing that, it really helps us solve some of our spacing needs, whether, whether we do it for our own staffing or whether we lease a portion of it out, it could be a combination of the two. But what it does do is allow us to give us the space we need without having to try and find a site to acquire. Just as for council's information, we've been working on with a park maintenance facility for years because we've not been able to find a site to do it, both because of the land and anything else, trying to find a line and to find a place to put our staffing. And so we're going to continue to need to have those staffing needs. And 200 mils is probably the most cost-effective means of doing that. Not that the term has been made, determination's been made yet, the money that we're requesting is really to make the investment, to do the studies, to take a look at some immediate needs we have, go from electrical system, we've got electrical system that's failing, the HVAC systems are failing. So if we just continue to lease that building, we need to provide adequate ventilation systems for, for the folks that are in there.
Councilmember McGurven, go ahead.
Excuse me, Councilmember Press, a lot of information there, great presentation, very, very helpful, I didn't know if you were getting into questions on that in advance. One that stood out to me, I'm just curious, a little more, very supportive of the subject of the sewer program. And I know more information needs to be supplied as it's coming in 2025. If you envision any sort of prioritization to that, I'm looking at areas that might be adjacent to water system like Cedar River, and obviously knowing like the further east you go, there might be less existing infrastructure connected to. How do we see that kind of rolling out? It doesn't seem to be available to everybody all at once.
Yeah, it's a great question, Councilmember McGurven. I think, you know, for us, we're going to look, take a look at it from the side of what we have available. We have homes that are adjacent to sewer lines now that just aren't connected. So those ones that their septic's failed, we want to try and get those there first because it's really kind of the low-hanging fruit. And then where we start to have folks who are within a couple hundred feet of existing sewer lines, so where we can try and mitigate the cost of the extension, the extension of that sewer main line out to them, and then the connection to their home makes it really cost prohibitive unless we, unless they have a lot of other folks join them. So we're going to try and prioritize those that are closest to existing lines and look those that were within the region and then move it out farther from there in terms of looking those that may have an impact. Again, if it is an impact to our aquifer, if we have an impact on the systems as a whole, obviously, you know, not everybody's going to want to convert at the same time. Folks that have, have a failing septic system, the first ones are going to want to convert because they've got to make a decision at that point in time whether to go septic or whether to go sewer. So we want to have some flexibility to be able to deal with those. But it's really trying to prioritize those that are low-hanging fruit and then work our way from there. That's the basic premise of kind of where we're thinking at this point in time.
Mr. President.
Yes, Councilmember Albertson. Martin, concerning the professional services for the restroom cleaning, kind of a two-part question. For that 500,000, how, how often, what does that cleaning look like? And does that mean they're all, they'll be all open all year? I mean, I know we're trying to address this problem. What does that actually? What does that actually entail?
Yeah, one of the things that we found was needed based on the data that Parks and Recreation has had available for users of the system, their system as a whole, is that there is a year-round need there. And in the past, we have not operated as a year-round need. We closed restrooms during a weird time. We still may close some of them based upon need, but the vast majority of the restrooms would be open year-round. This contract envisions cleaning seven days a week throughout the year. So it is the idea to make sure that we get the restrooms cleaned. It's a basic cleaning contract. They're not in there to do the maintenance, I mean, to do repairs. They're there to go in and clean the restrooms. If they need repairs noted, noted, let us know. Then our facility folks are going to make the repairs or the Parks and Recreation professionals, folks will make the repairs, note what's there, clean it, get it ready for the next day so that when people come in the morning time, it's ready to go.
Once a day, okay.
I'm sorry, one day, one day per, one, one cleaning per day.
Gotcha.
Uh, Council President Prince, I would follow up to that.
Uh, Councilmember Rivera, go ahead.
Thank you, Council President Prince. Following up to that, have we had the conversation around? Because I'm wondering, why are we contracting out when we don't keep it in-house? And if that's been a conversation around us keeping it in-house or maybe having it? Because didn't facilities used to live with Parks and Rec many years ago? Or am I incorrect in that assumption?
You are correct.
So, I mean, I know in the reorg and everything, things got shifted around, but was that conversation had in terms of allowing Parks and Rec to maintain their own restroom since they are on park property? And then my follow-up to that, because I know we're in limited time, is then have we also done a cost analysis on updating our infrastructure? Because a lot of the cleanliness and issues of closing these bathrooms, I believe, could be addressed by just upgrading our infrastructure, just similar to how we've done with other parks. And I know like the Portland Lou's have been super popular, but we don't have to get like the brand name Portland Lou, right? Like we can get a generic knockoff version. There's no shame in that.
So a couple of things. One is Portland Lou is probably a copyrighted name, so it wouldn't be a knockoff version. It would be a Simmers.
Thank you for correcting me.
But having said that, yes, restrooms used to be, was always under facilities. When facilities was under community services, the facility cleaning or the restroom cleaning was always under facilities. So when the facilities came over to public work, that function came over with us to it. We looked at that and again, our first try was to try and hire supplemental employees this year. And it's just that failure to be able to get people to come out and work who want, who can only can work for a limited number of time. It really hurt our ability to get the restrooms cleaned. As I said, we tried to hire 17 employees. We got maybe five at the most at any one time. Then somebody would quit to get, because they got another job because it was a full-time job year-round. And so, you know, that really hampered our ability to use that. We took a look at hiring employees, but 17 full-time employees was a substantial amount of money, probably in the neighborhood of $3 million. And that's, that's good, not a decision we could rush at this point in time. So what we did was look at contracting out for that in this interim two-year period to give us a chance to see how well the contract worked, to get some immediate work in there, get it done. Our goal at this point in time, we've already gone out for an RFP. We've narrowed it down to one firm where you think we'll be bringing a contract to council sometime in November to hopefully start the restroom cleaning beginning December 1st. So we've taken the steps, the biggest issue is we've worked out in agreement with the, with the, with ASME so that we were able to do this over a two-period, two-year period of time, then come back and revisit that decision at a later date. Doesn't mean we're going to reverse it, but it does mean we're going to have a chat, a conversation with them about it. But it is a substantial difference and we don't know, again, we'll try this contractor, see how it does. It's going to be a series of one, one-year contracts, three one-year contracts. So we'll do one year. If that doesn't work out, then we'll go someplace else. Or if it does work out, we'll do a second year and then see how it happens at the end of that two-year period to make a determination whether to move into the third year or we just terminate. But we have kept our options open, but the idea was, was to get the restrooms opened and get that activity cleaned. In answer to your last question, yes, if we made an investment in restroom facilities, I think that can substantially improve, certainly reduce the cost of those and reduce the cleanliness of the, I should not reduce, kind of couldn't really reduce the cleanliness of the restrooms anymore than they are now. But we can increase the cleanliness with better facilities, better structure, better materials, make it quicker and easier to get in there, reduce the amount of things that can be damaged in those facilities. So all those things are a part of integral to a good design. But unfortunately, we're dealing with very old, old facilities now. And so it's going to take some time to get to that point in time.
Thank you.
Thank you for the presentation, Martin. I have a few questions and I'm glad Councilmember McGurven asked about the septic to sewer. I don't have to ask regarding to that. But my question is in regards to airport security upgrades. And I'm really, I appreciate you putting this into the goal because for me, it has always been a safety. When I had gotten a police ride along a few years back, five, six years back, and there was an airplane that did crash. And so I really want to understand what, what in a timeframe, because phase one of construction is listed here, kind of just understanding more of that and what type of upgrades we're talking about.
So the, the airport security system is, one of the problems we've had, we've had a lot of people intruding in the runway, we've had a lot of runway incursions. And runway incursion with people who aren't authorized going to the runway. We've had people, we've had guys who were not clothed run across the runway at night, right in front of airplanes. I mean, we've had things like that. We've had people stealing cars. So part of the issue is a security, lack of security. We're not able to identify them, look at them. So we, we, we had a study done this last year in which we identified a number of vulnerabilities, number of vulnerable points at the airport. The idea of security upgrades is to take a look at how we can reduce those vulnerabilities, whether it's to increase CCTV cameras at entrances, whether it's to better gating, whether it's locking off certain gates, increase buffing the security of those. But it's really to make sure the perimeter airport is secure and we reduce the amount of intrusions that come into that particular area.
Councilmember Alhaller, before you go on to your next questions, I do want to get to our other presenter. So if you can make your questions short and your answers short so that I can get on to Parks and Rec and PD, I'd appreciate it.
Are we going to ask one? Didn't you have another question too?
I bet we have. Everyone else has asked, that's why I was allowing. But, go.
Yeah, I thought Councilmember Alhaller also has a question, but I'll ask mine then. My question is in regarding to your priority of traffic calming, because I know that there has been a lot of requests. If you can kind of explain a little more in detail, what are the priorities? Is it just kind of putting everything in the pot and drawing out? Or is it really this, the requirements we're looking at as safety? Where is it at impact of how many folks, so kind of the priorities?
All those were identified. Where we've had issues with speeding, we've looked at, we have a hierarchy in terms of how we go through addressing those speeding issues. And it, and we have to look at studies and we look at some non-invasive things such as signage or speed control. And when we find those don't work, then we get to looking at physical improvements. Physical improvements are the last level that we look at before we move forward. So we've got a number of folks that have gone through that, that scale of study and we continue to see the issues occur. So those folks, that's how we queue up. Once, once a person qualified, that's where we take a look at what, that now it's time for physical improvements, not necessarily going to be speed humps. It may be things like chicanes, it may be things like bull bouts, it may be things like on Puget Drive where we did striping and the delineators to try and create that narrowing effect. All those things are components of the traffic calming program, but it has to go through a hierarchy of study, speed studies, look at trying, less invasive such as signage and some, some, maybe some striping, some control. And then we get to the point in time where those things don't work, then we find, move into the physical improvements.
Any other questions for Martin before we move on?
Yes, Mr. President.
Councilmember Alhaller and then Councilmember Perez.
Thank you. I would be remiss if I did not specifically say thank you very much to the attention on sustainability, solid waste division and utilities and all of the infrastructure that we're, we're looking to put in with regard to addressing the municipal response to climate change. So thank you very much for all the work there. I do have an upstream question and that is several years ago, and each year, I believe, we had this conversation about joining PSE's green direct program. And I believe at one point we were actually on the waiting list for that. I don't know where they're at in developing the next rollout, but I'd be curious, are we still on some sort of waiting list? Are we still interested in pursuing that?
Take a look at that and then we'll have to get back with you on that because I'm not sure. I don't have that answer with me right now.
Councilmember Perez, and then we can move on.
Thank you, Mr. President. I apologize in advance if I don't, if I extend more, but it's just every two years that we have the opportunity to ask this question. So if I extend some, some of them, it will be because it's important. So with that, I want to congratulate your staff specifically for putting a very well-balanced budget for a department that is that large. I'm very impressed that for all the work that you put together, you're just asking for 0.5 full-time employee, employed, but no surprise that you have decided to put a chunk of this money instead of putting more employees to training, which is something fascinating that, that you have prioritized training in your department, which is very, very important. In your facility division specifically, I want to thank for all the good data and how detailed it is. But one of the goals is to complete the construction of the downtown Pavilion Market and execute lease in agreement with facilitario operator. Is this, do we really have the funds for this? Is, is this already in this budget?
Yes, it was in the 23, 24 budget.
Don't ask about that.
And so we have some fund, we believe we have enough funds, but you know, it's like anything else. Until we go out to bid and see what the bid number is, we think we're okay and then we'll find out. But we are, it looks like by the end of this year, we should be ready to go out to bid.
Thank you, Martin.
Thank you, Martin.
Thanks, Martin.
Thank you.
Thank you, Martin.
We had you for a whole hour. All right, next up's Parks and Recreation, Mary Jean.
Seats nice and warm. A welcoming feeling. Good evening, Council President and Councilmembers. Before I start my presentation, I do want to take the moment to thank a few people. I'd like to thank Carrie and her team. This has been an enlightening experience. This is my first budget round for Parks and Recreation and it was a fantastic experience working with her team. I'd like to thank everyone from my department here. We have representatives from all of our divisions and various roles. And I thank them tremendously for trusting me to provide you with this update. We are going to get really into just the items that we are requesting through this budget process and highlight a few other things. For reference, our accomplishments are listed and they begin on section three dash seven, six. We have three divisions that we have realigned to. And please take a moment, I'm sure you have read them, but the team has done a tremendous job in providing those lists. It's not all of them, it's just what fit into this budget narrative. Onto the preliminary departmental budget proposal changes. We are requesting to update and transition three park maintenance positions into encampment removal focus. We added an additional 20,000 to be spread amongst those three positions. They cannot stay as park maintenance, they're going to have to be different classifications because they do require a separate certification. And because of that, that was the difference with the additional 20K. The only other position we are asking for through this budget process is a capital manager position. We currently have one individual dedicated to capital for our entire department. Betsy does an amazing job, if you've not already seen her, she's, works cross-departmentally as well within the divisions and in our department. If maintenance is continuing to be a priority, capital updates and improvements are strategic. We can't have an aging facility. It becomes dated, expensive and costly to replace and becomes a time capsule that's not responsive to the community needs. So the request there is for the capital manager, so we at least now have two people instead of one. Similarly to the position below, there's two new positions there, one new recreation supervisor and one associate planner. This is budget neutral. What we're looking towards for this department is the last 10 years, we've, we've been through in kind of a time capsule, a little bit of a transition and a holding pattern and for various reasons. And our goal is to build off of that in terms of what was successful and move towards being responsive and quicker in terms of what has not been successful. So we're looking to be less top-heavy and to move our resources more front-facing. So that's why we are looking to repurpose the salary savings from the Parks Planning and Natural Resource Director to a recreation supervisor and associate planner. It also requires us to dip into our own departmental budget by 90,000, which we will reappropriate some funds to offset that cost. This is our new cost for the biennial budget, 7.6 million. This does not fund all of these projects. This is money used to complete several of these projects. For example, the Cedar River Trail flood, that is 90% covered by a FEMA grant. So only about 100,000 is going to come out of this 7.6 million. And I'm sorry, I did not print off my notes, so I'll read some of them in here. The next one is the Arlington Park renovations. This one is, we're looking to get a grant of about 1.2 million, so we should find out here. And right now, we are preliminary community engagement and program plans. We're about 10% complete on that project. The Edland Car Development, we're at the first step, which is master planning. And then funds will determine whether this is phased, but we anticipate the first phase of construction in 2028. A lot of the projects we have in our department are legacy projects. They're 10, they're decades old. And our goal is to complete several of these so we can move towards more responsive projects and be more nimble in terms of what we're going to be investing in. Liberty Park improvements, we have an opportunity here. We'd like to develop a miracle field and what that means is an all-ability field. We've done a really wonderful job with our park amenities, with having swings and slides and other features that are for all abilities, but we don't have any sports facilities dedicated. And this would be a soft pour surface for a ball field. We're looking at using that little liberty and this would be fantastic for our aging population, those with ambulatory issues or any sort of modal wheelchair, anything like that. Right now, we really don't have anything in the community for them. Then we have Northeast Renton Park and Main Creek Park. We're looking at completing the master plan and we're looking for phase one implementation. Cleveland Richardson Park, we're looking to complete the master plan in 2025. And 25, 26 funding will, we have a grant at the moment, so we're waiting to see on that as well. But we will be kicking off engagement this fall. The Springbrook Boardwalk, unfortunately, that was damaged, that was vandalism, that burned down. But we're nearly finished with 90% of design documents and permit application. And so we should be going out for bidding and for construction in 2025. World Cup Legacy Square, that's being led by CED, but that's an interdepartmental effort. And Labor Love, that is at 40% complete and I'm sure Jenna will touch on that more as well when she gives her presentation. Underground utility work construction in summer '25 and above ground in 2025 and 2026. Lastly is number nine, and that is that Cedar River Park expansion. That is our pursuit for the acquisition of the Stone Way property if successful. Moving on to a golf course, I'd like to applaud Steve Myers. He's in the crowd tonight. I think he still is, I'm going to assume he's still back there, but he has done an absolute phenomenal job. Our revenue has increased, I would say employee morale has increased, customer service continues to be stellar and improving under his leadership. They are requesting to increase fees. They're doing so to offset about 14%. It's simply just the cost of doing business, professional services, inflation, wages, things of that nature. However, we are not pricing ourselves out of the market. We're still one of the lower and more affordable. Chief here recently just did a turf check for us on Friday and so he said the condition is really good. Police's endorsement of the golf course.
And you didn't invite me, Chief? It's terrible.
I was about to say.
I know, I know, more, more to come for sure. In terms of why we're doing this realignment, this is our new delivery model. The department has, is going to, well, we drifted away, but we're going to get back close to our roots. We are guided our industry by the National Rec Park Association. That is our industry best practice and Martin spoke to accreditation. We had ours, we let it lapse, but we're going to pursue it again. It is a big lift and it's extremely important. I know the police department just successfully accomplished theirs as well. These are important. They give you metrics, they give you standards and they keep you up to date with your industry best practices. This is crucial and we will be pursuing that once again. Our industry tells us these are the seven dimensions of a well-being and we wholeheartedly stand behind these both internally and externally. And this will be more reflective in how we start outward communication with both the public and our staff. In terms of realignment, what we're proposing is to switch down to two divisions. Again, less top-heavy, less directors. I can't think enough, we have Jennifer Spencer as our interim recreation director and she's doing phenomenal, Colleen Hunsaker as well as our Parks and Trails. We used to be several divisions with several managers reporting direct and this is to provide us depth. Right now, we still have a lot of programs where it's a one person and there's no backup to that individual and we need to provide that depth. The farmer's market's a great example of that, the neighborhood program, the volunteer program. We have a lot of programs that are flagship and beloved by the community and we need to provide them added resources and support for sustainability, but also for succession planning and as we transition these programs into the future. Back to the NRPA, our values are going to be aligned with their three pillars. This is identified as our industry. This is identified as our industry's best value system, and that is focusing on conservation, equity by way of access and ability, as well as health and wellness. I believe we are already in that direction, but this will help refine and keep us focused so we can improve quality and metrics for our department. This is coming out of the comprehensive plan. So for those who are in planning development, this is all going to look very familiar. This is illustrating and explaining what human services is for the city of Renton. A huge portion of our efforts for just human services itself is really contracting and brokering out services. But to effectively provide health and human services, really it's a citywide effort. Every department plays a role in terms of supporting and facilitating and fostering an opportunity for our community members to have access to resources. This is an illustration of what that looks like. It does take a village, and I do think as a city, we do collaborate well in terms of leveraging our resources to our community. A lot of times that's braiding funding opportunities between 1590 human services funds and what we'll be doing with our opioid settlement funds. It requires us to coordinate with all our service providers to be that extension of us and provide frontline and direct services where we cannot. We have a fantastic program with our police department utilizing FD cares, which we're hoping to expand upon because that really is a case management software system that's mobile with a caseworker. It's probably the most effective tool that we will look to use more. In terms of additional departments, Parks and Recreation, we also provide social services, not just through human services, but our senior center alone provides a phenomenal amount of resources for our seniors. Anywhere from financial information, from housing stability in human services well. But there is a litany. We are the most front facing. We are open. Seven days a week is an operation. The community center alone is open 16 hours and we served last year 2 million individuals in our park system. So when you can't get into city hall because the hours don't, aren't conducive to our operations here or work hours, a lot of people end up calling your community center and senior center, excuse me, and we proudly help navigate them through the city's resources. This year we'll be funding and will be coming before council for your approval for the 46 contracts for human services. We did look to focus those contracts being as centric as possible and directly as close as possible to the city of Renton. Resources are regional, and so people in need tend to have to travel far or find and figure out how to navigate kind of the labyrinth that is necessary to find the resources that an individual may need. And then I'll speak to Health Commons with an opportunity that I, we will also be presenting to council. So one of the things we learned by being in EHHS Equity Housing and Human Services is we looked deeper into who, who was rendering our human services, and it was mostly women and children. And for that reason, we are proposing a large contract that is very innovative and is being endorsed by Representative Berquist as well as Representative Ty. And so what this is, is investing into almost like a utility format. And this is a universal screening tool at the junior high level for our very own school district. We believe in developing resiliency and providing resources for our students in crisis and need, as well as figuring out how to adapt some of our recreational program team, programming to offset where social recreational programming can also contribute to stabilization. This is essentially the hub. So we'd like to come forth to council as we propose this contract with the Cal presentation. Recently, there was a conversation hosted by the CDC that highlighted this project, and it was our school district in Renton. It was King County OSPI as well as Health Commons. And so again, this is to produce barriers and allow all students to receive this universal screening so that it connects them to resources. Only some students have a need for crisis intervention. As a city, we want to make sure we're funding those nonprofits that provide those services so that A, we have accountability and guarantee our resources stay within the city, but that we're investing upstream and again into our students. These are our future adults that may have challenges, needs or crisis. And what we want to do is invest in them as soon as possible at a young age as possible. I'm going to end here because I know there's questions. But I just wanted to give you a smattering of things that we're focusing on. We have again more goals in our budget book that we've listed. And again, those aren't all of our goals. Those are just what would fit in there. But I just wanted to provide a smattering just to look forward to that we have so much that we're looking forward to with our 84 FTEs. I couldn't be more proud of everything they're working on and how hard they've been working over these years. Carrie, Carrie Olson is phenomenal and resilient. She is a machine of one person and has some help. But again, our department is looking to get behind her to provide her better support and depth. She will be having to pivot and move her market to another location as closely to downtown as possible, but that is no easy feat. There's always storage. It's 16 days of popping up this very large market. And so we're looking to support her on finding that location and making sure there's a very minimal impact to the growers who rely on this event for their business, as well as it's a massive connection for the community. Everyone who does any sort of engagement or public facing almost always uses the farmer's market as its backdrop. And we appreciate providing that resource, but it's now also our turn to support the program itself to make sure it has resiliency and doesn't run into any too huge of a challenge that we can't get behind them on during this transition. Equity and help access, this is a phenomenal opportunity. We're going to be looking to getting heat pumps into homes that don't have it. This is a partnership with the city of Bellevue, and this is to get, this is environment, climate, resiliency. There's a lot of vulnerable homeowners who are in their home and we want to stabilize their ability to stay in their home. Most everyone in our housing repair program are women and women over 70 years old. And they're just living in a home that's aging and that they need our help to make sure it maintains safety and they have the ability to leave it and return. And honestly, they need heat, and this is what we need to do to get behind them. Health and wellness, I'm proud to say we've been having some conversations. We have a unique opportunity and we're very excited to partner with our police department. Our team is looking at doing some trails along our Cedar River Trail to activate that. We have some phenomenal relationships with the bike community. I'd really like to applaud Jason from our team, Letter, who's been fantastic and really helping push this initiative. Betsy, all the team is on board. Again, we're very excited for the opportunities we have ahead and to start closing out some legacy comm projects so we can do some really innovative things. Capital and planning, again, our Pro's Plan, our Park Record and Open Space Plan. This is our big guiding document. This is our version of the comprehensive plan, but we are in the process of overhauling it. So the community feels that we are responding to their interest and needs and that we're not going with the list and just hearing them, but truly allowing their input to influence our priorities and influence where resources are going to go, including council. I know there's an interest in us being more proactive when it comes to sports fields and amenities, things of that nature. Grants and acquisition, we also saw in our budget survey that the community continues to ask for trails and trail connections. And so we are working earnestly to make sure that those do not fall behind and that we continue to advocate. Those really do require interlocal coordination between ourselves, King County and other cities. And the team is actively working towards pursuing that. Lastly, operations and maintenance is just another example. Ian and Gabriella with Urban Forestry, again, very small team for massive responsibility in terms of the city. But again, this is one way we're using data and analytics. We're looking at areas that have been under invested and coming back with reinvestment. This helps with climate. This helps with heat and cooling. And so it's imperative that we use data to strategically invest into our community. And with that, council, I'm open for questions.
All right. Any questions for MJ? Before we get started, we're going to do round robin, one question each, and then we'll come back around. If anyone else has a question after we've all asked one question. Any questions for MJ?
Mr. President.
Yes, Councilmember Perez.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you, MJ. I have to tell you, it was a little hard to review the, the budget because when you compare it with the past budget and this budget with the reorganization, it was, it was unclear the goals, how it translates to this new plan. But I have many questions. I hope that I am allowed to ask all of them, but they are just with the intent of clarify this new proposed of how we are recognizing the, the department. And more specifically, how this in, in a specific samples will benefit the community that we serve. My first question is towards the golf course, which the golf revenue is 9.3 million and the golf expenses are 9.7. By reviewing the highlights of the budget changes, you address the goal, the cost of the golf course, but you don't explain what are your plans specifically to upset the, the fact that today or in the future, the taxpayers will be subsidized in the golf course, which was one of the things that we said that we were never going to do.
The difference in the revenue and the expenditures is capital investment. And so the operations side of the golf course budget is self sustaining, but the difference between the total costs, it does include some capital that's planned for the biennial. And I can send you some details. I can send council some details of the figures.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Council President Prince?
Yes, Councilmember Rivera.
Thank you. I need to say this before, I'm loving this budget packet so much because of, and I want to shout out Christine in the back. The amount that Renton results has incorporated into everything and all of the measurables, you made my dream come true. And it's been fantastic to look through, to look through the Renton results, to look through the measurables and the surveys, the results and the kind of compare and contrast. It's been great. I just want to give kudos to also utilities presentation, this presentation. I've had a lot of great information to go over. A theme I noticed though with both util, with both public works, excuse me, with both public works and parks and rec is you've both talked about a limit of space and kind of feeling a little constricted. I know utilities talked, or public works and utilities talked about it in terms of a lot of confinement, not only with police, but with public works, parks and rec. How, how do you see your, your department kind of navigating that going forward with all of the things that you have to now maintain?
Creatively.
Beautiful.
No, to be honest, I mean, I, I think we are front facing. So there's not many of us here at city hall, but we are trying to be as resourceful as possible. I, I do think it does require us to share a lot of space and be creative, but it's, it's really making sure are we utilizing all our space to the most effective way possible. To Martin's point, about 200 mil, we have Liberty Park building. We have a couple of other buildings that we can and are assessing right now to maximize and basically leave no one space left alone in terms of being a viable option for anything we may need.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Questions for MJ? Go ahead. Yes.
Thank you, Council President. Thank you, MJ, for the presentation. Very thorough. I really appreciate it. I actually, very thorough in, in terms of we're looking at equity and really mental health coming out of the global pandemic. So I really appreciate that. Now, as far as the integration direction for health and human services, that's, please remind me, is this just for high school or is it for all K through 12 and with all schools?
Right now it's middle school. I keep saying junior high. I'm dating myself. So middle school students, they're looking to scale this to all junior highs. And I did confirm, and actually it is eventually, once that model is successful, the question earlier by another council member was, would this go younger potentially? There is that possibility. Right now, the model is just trying to get it into the other schools as well.
Any other questions?
Mr. President.
Please.
This is an FTE question on page 382. I noticed that there is a human services coordinator at A20 for several running years, and then it moved, it seems to move to a human services coordinator at A20 for the coming budget years. And I'm just wondering, what is the difference between the two? And then the same thing happens with admin secretary number one at A9, where it's, it's listed as one FTE for several years. And then it's an admin secretary number one at A9 for the ensuing years. And I'm just wondering, what is the difference? Is that?
I can explain that. That was really when we combined EHHS with Parks and Rec. When we had our spreadsheet laid out, we wanted to make sure that we were accounting for all of those changes. And so really when we, when we printed this, they should have been combined. It's just one was in EHHS and now it's moved to Parks and Rec. And so it was a way for us to count the positions and make sure that we had them all in the right spot.
But it's the same thing?
Same thing.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone who hasn't asked a question, which I think is just Councilmember Alveson and Councilmember McGervin. Have any questions before I move on to the second round? All right. Councilmember Perez and then Councilmember Rivera.
Thank you. In page three dash 75, there is overtime. Let's call about overtime. 2024, we have for overtime 37,776. By 25 proposal, there is 72,776, which is the 138% increase. Can you explain why?
Yes, ma'am. The reason why, similar to what Martin had expressed, is that when, in 2019, when the union changed how we can use seasonals and supplementals, that also affected park maintenance significantly. Some positions were converted from a purse position is what they called it to an FTE, but we are also completely short in terms of not having that manpower. So those, several of those positions and team members are doing overtime, as well as the reorg of facilities leaving. We have delineated duties differently. And so we have absorbed some different responsibilities. So that's also added. As well as when the FTEs on the recreation side of the house are hosting and helping with river days and things of that nature. That's a pretty big lift on the department as well. So it is 84 people, but it's a lot of manpower when we are seven day a week and nearly year round operation. So primarily it's due to that. The supplemental challenge for park maintenance has been most impactful to them.
Thank you.
Councilmember Rivera?
Yeah, I'm actually going to change my question and follow up with that. You just mentioned about maintaining your parks has been kind of, it sounds like a strain. Have you, have you worked with public works in terms of coming up with more creative solutions? Because I know they talked about the contract for parks cleaning. And now you're talking about, is that the best solution is what I'm, is what I'm asking you is contracting out for our parks cleaning rather than kind of working more creatively with what we have?
I think it's a current creative solution. I think long term, yes, I think to Martin's point, this gives us a chance. I mean, really a lot of the impacts we're feeling were pre-COVID. And then as we came out of COVID, it, it kind of accelerated and really made it more substantially felt. I think there's certainly an opportunity. I think this is a good Band-Aid fix right now.
Thank you so much.
Councilmember Ben? Did you have a?
Yeah, thank you. I have a question. Thank you. My question is with the national, according to National Recreation and Park Association award, and thank you for picking that up. When you said relapse, how long has it been? Just out of curiosity?
Probably about 10 years.
Oh, 10 years. Okay, thank you.
Absence of President Prince will do a third round and probably cut it after that.
Thank you, Mr. President. Again, and in page three 76, the increase, the increase from 2024 to 2025 in regular salaries is 58.1 under administration. I kind of understand this because I think it's impact of the reorg. But I always have had a challenge, and it's not with your department, it's with all departments, when we have the other service and, and charges. Because that can be everything and nothing. And that is a serious increase of 212%. Why?
I'll have to get back to you on that one.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All righty, my, oh, Councilmember Betts?
Do you have another question?
I do not.
Other council members? Nobody has questions? Okay, good. So it's me. It's me and you. If you can give me last year during the biennial, biennial organization, which was a, not biennial organization, it was just a reorganization, right? To when we changed the, 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 the new department and we start sending other employees to other department. One of the positions that we transferred from the, the former department EHHS was to Parks and Recreation as a community outreach coordinator. That position, the position that That position, the position that was granted was community outreach coordinator.
I think that one went to executive services.
I am sorry, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm looking at here, Parks and Recreation, and I am reading the new one. It just say new. It doesn't, it's a memo from last year. It doesn't even have a title. That new position is adding to these new three positions. At the time, I requested job description for that position, and it was not clear, but had to do with something with outreach and communities and something about that. I don't remember. Was the position fulfilled at the time today that is a vacant position? Am I correct?
Mostly. The position was occupied by our administrative assistant that moved out of EHHS, if you're talking about that one. Community outreach, cultural and community outreach went to executive services. The DEI analytics went over to HR, as well as affordable housing, going back to CED. So with the neighborhood program and human services coming back to Parks and Recreation, so did that position. So that position was occupied after the transition. It is essentially was a department-wide benefit and value assisting in one of the duties that we were able to accomplish during that time was assessing our whole temporary event permit process for the department. So the position was filled, it's now vacant again due to that person moving on to another position, but we have every intention to fill that position.
Okay, thank you. Council President Prince?
Yes, Councilmember Rivera.
I'm kind of swinging back in terms of what we were talking about before in regards to some strain being felt by not only public works, police and Parks and Rec. Do you feel the lack of space for some of, I mean, our entire city, but I'm going to speak specifically to Parks and Rec and human services, as we grow, we're over 108 now, and we try to invest in the infrastructure to provide the human services that are needed, do you feel like you have room to grow and to address those services with the spaces and with the availability of spaces in the city as it stands today?
Within the Parks and Recreation system, we don't have a ton of physical space to deliver front-facing services. What we're trying to do is incentivize nonprofit direct service providers and organizations to be in Renton, so they can have their front-facing locations here. We're trying to do that by way of increasing our funding versus having it small and spread out amongst many, as well as figuring out how to work with them with 1590 funds. I know CED is also looking at creative ways to get nonprofits tied to affordable housing so that we can move towards wraparound services as well. So there is, yes, the more we can bring into the community, absolutely, the better.
Thank you so much, I appreciate it.
Mr. President?
Yes, Councilmember.
Councilmember Van had kind of slated for a question.
Go ahead, Councilmember.
Real quick, I appreciate the chart and how from six divisions down to two, so we're front-facing. Just for clarification, we're asking for another capital funding manager. And so what are the two, and how are the tasks and roles?
Absolutely. So us not having very much depth at all for capital management as well as planning, as you can see where other divisions and departments have been really successful, is pursuit of grants. Without us being aligned this way and clearly advertising and aligning in terms of values of our funding sources, so that's significant, by calling out values of conservation, equity, health and wellness, chronic health is a huge measurement right now for awarding as well as analytics, but you have to have the capacity to pursue them, actively apply as well as provide compliance, and then it's deploying the contracts and resources necessary. Again, one capital, I mean, you can see the vast amount of infrastructure that we're responsible for, which is a huge reason why we've always had historically a very large backlog. We're pretty anemic in that regard, and we're grateful for the partnership in other departments. But to move faster for what we're responsible for, as well as to move at the speed necessary for other departments when they have opportunity, we are falling behind and we need to catch up.
Thank you.
Yes, Councilmember Perez.
Thank you. Maybe this is for you, Carrie. In page 379, on their business operations in the Recreation and Human Services Division, they are, on their goals are the security cameras and the new roof for the clubhouse in the golf course, as well as the CDG, CDBG funds for towards the don person roof replacement and H pack. I understand that in the past, this thing were on their community services because facilities was in that department, but now that it's in public works, I found that it is in both places. Does this belong in community services or in public works?
I think because the CDBG program is administered through Parks and Recreation, they wanted to highlight that was one of their goals that they're working on this year. And the dollars are in capital for that, and so that's why Facilities is working in partnership with Parks and Recreation to use those dollars.
And to be in compliance, Lori Loman spends an immense amount of time administering those dollars. Those dollars are intense and not easy to manage, and she does all of the administration as well as we get reimbursed, she has to track her time. So Facilities gets to do the great part of executing the contract and the project. We are responsible for all mitigation of compliance and accounting and reporting.
Thank you, MJ.
Any other questions for MJ?
I may help find a question, if it's not possible.
Anyone else have a question before I? All right, go ahead.
Thank you. Thank you for all the data that you provide and the answers to our questions about why the need of reorganizing the department. While I understand a lot of the logic behind this and the data that support this organization, can you give for the public, just how the public, I understand at administrative level, how it will be easier to manage the department? How the public will benefit from this? What will be difference? What improvements we will see on Parks and Recreation for the public with this new organization?
I think the impact to the public is a couple of things, is transparency and alignment of resources. We are spread out, we're like an inch deep and a mile wide, and that's an old favorite Jay Covington saying, and that's exactly how we feel. We're looking to pool in our resources to improve quality of experiences, quality of maintenance, as well as to expedite projects, as well as pursue additional funds and resources that our department desperately needs, and we're not going to only rely on our general fund. We're also looking to align our messaging. We're a lot of little brands over one to one umbrella, and sometimes that can be confusing to the public when they're trying to understand who's hosting what, where do I go, where do I go from information? So we're looking to simplify how we deliver and provide while internally aligning and working closers together. We're hoping to beautify our parks by utilizing our urban forestry program, which has been separate to a degree, as well as leveraging that mechanical and manpower as well as the technical skill. So our goal is to improve our ability to interface with our department as well as provide growth and opportunity for our staff. I have sat with almost every single one of my FTEs to thank them for their time, to thank them for their service, to get to know them and understand whatever we do, how we are personally and professionally impacting them as well. And the majority of what we've heard from our staff is they want opportunity. They're looking for transparency as well. They want to know what's coming, they want to know what's going on, but they're looking for opportunity for cross-training and certification and growth. And so by aligning us with clear objectives and priorities, I believe we can move us in that direction.
Thank you, MJ. I appreciate you.
Thank you, MJ.
Thank you, sir.
All right. Our final presentation for tonight is the Police Department. Oh, we're getting all three of you guys. Oh, man.
Always bring backup, sir.
Absolutely.
Although I may need help operating these slides now. Oh. Let's see. Tried to make it cop proof and already screwed it up. So, good evening, Council President, Council Members. I'm John Schultz, your Chief of Police, and with me I have Deputy Chiefs Rutledge and Harden. Our pleasure to be here tonight to present our '25-'26 proposed budget and then answer any questions you may have going on to the next one. Kind of shows what our previous budget, current, and then what our proposed is going to be. I'll be skipping all of our accomplishments and successes over the last couple of years, which have been many, and get right into the meat of what our proposal is. Our first is proposing the additional funding of eight commissioned officers over the next two-year budget period, four in 2025 and four in 2026. These new positions will be allocated to our Patrol Operations Division, essentially increasing each of our eight patrol squads by one commissioned member. She know Patrol Operations is kind of the foundation of our department, responsible for the 24/7 coverage and shoulder a majority of our calls for service. With the increasing volume of calls, the violence and complexity of these calls for service, we see these positions as a necessity to assist with the burden that they're bearing. This will also assist us by reducing response times to calls for service, decrease overtime that we have to use to backfill staffing needs while increasing community and officer safety. All right. So our next request would be for a non-commissioned FTE, and I'd say this is probably one of our priorities coming into our budget discussions this year. This request is for the non-commissioned employee for the 2025 budget, and really what this is, is rightsizing some of our internal services for the department and keep us in, so we're able to keep up with the increased demand that as we've increased our commissioned staff and the increase in some of the internal work, particularly for evidence technicians. Currently, we have two who are responsible for the intake, release and destruction, handling of all the evidence, as well as callouts to crime scenes. In 2021, these two evidence techs took in over 4,900 articles of evidence, increased, I'm sorry, that was '21. In '22, it increased to 5,800 articles, and in '63, they processed 6,100 articles of evidence. In 2023, they also responded to 23 callouts to assist with evidence collection for local investigations and regional officer-involved shootings. In our recent audit for accreditation, our evidence was noted as an area of concern with critical backlog in release and destruction caused by not having enough time between the two evidence techs we currently have to work on the backend when it comes to the destruction and release. So to meet best practices and accreditation standards, we have been supplementing our evidence with other staff members and overtime, which is not a long-term option to truly keep up with the service demand. So our next request, and this one is a little bit more difficult, it almost appears to be self-serving for me and the two gentlemen sitting behind me, but this is to bring the chief and deputy chief positions up to market rate. There's been a little bit of a compression based on how our police commanders pay is structured, and when you look at comparables in our area, this makes it kind of equal to what those are. And the purpose is to ensure we have quality candidates for these positions and safeguarding the future of our organization. Moving on, some of the miscellaneous adjustments that you will see in our budget will be a reduction in the score jail costs of about $350,000 over the next biennium. But offsetting this, you'll see an increase in the cost for ValleyCom, the Public Safety Emergency Radio Network, and our traffic cameras of about $400,000. We've also budgeted $30,000 per year for software upgrades for traffic collision investigations and to assist in entry of court orders for our staff services. And see, that was quick. I just got to the meat of it, and I knew you guys would probably have many questions for me.
I'd say we have about 50 questions, though.
Any questions?
I wanted to save as much time for you guys as I could.
That was, that was, that was super fast. Thank you. Yes, Councilmember.
So this is really, really, really 40,000 feet. I'm looking at the budget book here, and under Executive Services Department, where you have mayor, CAO, blah, 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 blah. I don't, I don't see where your organization rolls up. And so then I turn to the police section, and you're the top of the pile, but who do you report to?
I report to the mayor.
Okay, because that's not, that's not really spelled out here anywhere. So I was wondering if we should add a, is there a reason why that's not shown here?
It should be, we'll fix that.
Thank you. Council President Prince?
Yes, go ahead, Councilmember Rivera.
Can we go over some of our recruitment trends and numbers? I think it's, having meetings with you, I know we do need to increase our numbers, and we're currently commissioned, I believe, at 133.
Yes, ma'am.
And so this would put us, I can do math, to at 141, 142, no, 141. I can do math, yeah, totally. A plus, A plus 130. So do you believe through the trends that we've discussed, that you'll be able to fill those eight positions over the next two years? And explain to me why.
Okay. And like you said, we're currently budgeted at 133, and of that 133, we're at 130. I think I can say with relatively, relative confidence that by the end of this year, we'll be at 133, our full budgeted number, which is exciting for us. It's the first time in many years we've even gotten that close to having our allocated number of officers on the street. With, for a while, the amount of candidates or the candidates we were, we were getting didn't really meet our standard, so it was a lot, a lot more difficult for us to hire and recruit. With the officers that we're seeing come through with the dedicated background of recruitment officer, I would almost gamble that once this budget is approved, he's probably already lining up people to fill these positions. He's very excited for this opportunity. We're excited to fill these spots, and I think it wouldn't be an issue like it has in the past to fill them.
I do appreciate that. I know we've talked about, but I just wanted to be put on the record for public consumption, that this is something that we're going to see happen, and is absolutely needed.
I think there's a caveat that goes with that. Just because we get to those numbers, it doesn't always reflect our operational numbers. Right now, we're at 130. We probably have close to 115 or 110 that are probably operational due to FMLA injuries or just simply they're still in training. As most of you know, once we hire someone on, it still takes about a year before they're operational and on solo patrol. So as we get those bodies, and it looks good on paper, we still have to be a little bit patient until we feel the result of having them.
Mr. President?
Yes, Councilmember Perez.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Chief. Thank you for your presentation. Thank you, thank you, guys. So last year, I was not here to thank the mayor for his message, who actually found it was great because it was short, but prioritized three things that are very important for the city. I mean, I was very impressed because in the past, we would receive like four, five pages of this message saying, well, the budget is and this and this and that. No, this budget, this presentation was very clear. There are three priorities, and there are three things that we're, right now, this budget has to focus. Number one is public safety. And when he addressed, and I want to quote it because I think this data was, was, was very well received, is that we are currently 47% below the national average and 8% below the state Washington average of, 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 of service per resident. This is, this is, this is very serious business. We need to really put a priority to, to be better in this area. So I appreciate the eight FTEs that you're asking, as well as the question, Councilmember Rivera, of being realistic, that in the past, sometimes we have tried very hard. Since I can remember that I have been a council member, you know, to add more and more and more, and, and, and I will not say we have failed, but we have not keep up with the number of residents that we're adding to our community for this purpose. Said that, I know that now is a big priority based on this memo, and I'm very happy that we are in line with that. Could you please, for the benefit of our community, tell us that these new A commissioners officers, what, do you, have you identified will be, what will be their role? Will be there being patrolling or detectives?
Yes, ma'am, and, and, yeah, it would be reckless for me to come in here and ask you for additional officers without us having a plan for where they're going to be. They will be assigned to our Patrol Operations Division, which is our patrol officers, the officers that are here 24/7 responding to 911 calls. So that will, will benefit the community by having an increased amount of officers on the street at any given time. It'll help Um, it'll help them with officer safety issues, though, though, they'll have officers available to them, um, decrease on response time for calls for service. And hopefully we'll see a decrease in our overtime usage as we have to backfill now so we can keep a minimum staffing on the street.
Thank you.
President? Yes, Councilmember, uh, Albertson.
Uh, Chief, I, um, I know you mentioned, uh, in the presentation or when you mentioned technology, uh, I believe you kind of mentioned software and, uh, in looking at, at the reading. That's mainly what I saw. I'm curious, is that when it comes to technology, is that mainly, um, really just what's in sight? And I'm, I'm speaking specifically like drones and that sort of thing since I didn't hear that or see that. But that presentation, I mean, I see the, the utility of it and that sort of thing. Is that built in somewhere, uh, those type of technologies to help you, you know, work even more?
Right. It hasn't yet. Um, what, the, the pieces that are in there are for software upgrades to some of our, um, critical needs when it comes to either investigating traffic collisions or helping with the entry of court orders. That's the, the technology that we have in this current. Um, I would agree with you, some of the advances and I appreciate, you know, the council members that were being, that were able to be present at the, um, SWAT capabilities demonstration on Friday. I think they really showcased what, um, technology and how it can help, um, with even the, the officer safety, the community safety and how it just enhances their ability to do their job. So I think with the advancing increase in the way technology is looking, particularly for law enforcement, um, it, it's really a force multiplier. And yes, we're, we're looking at several options right now. We, we don't have anything prepared for this budget and we're also looking, um, for potential other ways to, to, um, some alternate ways to, to budget those in so we're not just feeding off the, um, general budget.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions for Chief?
Council, uh, President Prince, I have.
Let me find out if anyone else.
Sorry.
Anything from, uh, Councilmember Ohio or Councilmember Vaughn? Councilmember Vaughn?
Thank you, Council President, President. Um, thank you, Chief, for the presentation. I have a question regarding, um, perhaps I missed it, but in terms of the navigator position that we were going to have in the Police Department, did that ever come to fruition or is it actually in Human Services? Because that was like last year's thing and, and so I just want to confirm where that's at.
Yes, that's outsourced, so it's, um, through a inter-local agreement with, um, the Ritten Regional Fire Authority.
The FD-CARES program.
Oh, okay.
Is what we currently use for navigation.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Rivera?
Thank you, uh, Council President Prince. Um, I just want to make a quick note here, um, because I do love the written results so much, um, that on the main written results page, we don't have in performance and metrics your, um, the target when it comes to your priority one calls. Ideally, how quickly do you want an officer to get to a priority one call?
I believe what's our current is four, under four minutes, isn't it?
All right. Cause I just wanted also to, uh, point out that overall, when it comes to priority two, priority three, you all are meeting or beating your desired results. But you know, when it comes to the priority ones, you're just over those four minutes. And I wonder if having those extra officers, like you're stating, would help?
I would hope so. I mean, with extra officers on the street, it just makes sense. It's logical that we'd be able to respond that much quicker.
Right. And this for my colleagues, um, colleagues. I'm looking at page 2.8 or 28 as well as 356. So I'm comparing the two of those and just seeing that like we're kind of steady when it comes to our priority one calls and hopefully that'll get us under that four minutes, right? And just pointing out to, that is a really good point of measure. And so I do appreciate you answering that more kind of detailed question. Thank you.
Any, uh, final questions for Chief?
Mr. President?
Yes.
Like, if you allow me, I have two more questions.
Go ahead.
First one is, uh, do you know how many people are still on L1?
I'm sorry?
Do you know how many people, how many people are still on L1?
I know none of our current employees are left one. I'm not sure what the.
Sorry, I don't know how to pronounce it. I said Leo, right? Have you pronounced it left?
It's less than 80, between 75 and 80.
Oh, thank you. Thank you.
Council President Prince, I have a follow-up to that question?
Hold on.
Oh, sorry.
Go ahead.
No, she can go on then, me. I have, the other question is unrelated.
Okay, go ahead.
Sorry, I thought we were doing, I, thank you, Council President Prince. I do apologize for the confusion. And so going off of that, I actually noticed, um, when I was going through the written results, um, interestingly enough, and please forgive me, on page 1.16, when it comes to the fireman's pension, the fund accumulates resources, um, and is going to be soon at what we see, uh, expected to grow, not soon, don't take me quoted. The fund balance is expected to grow to an overfunded status of the pension. So after the plan is closed and all beneficiaries are expired for the fireman's pension, the balance will be moved to L1 retiree medical. Now, seeing that we are actually seeing that fund come to over, overfunded status and the general competitiveness with recruitment, do we foresee the possibility of offering medical retirement in the 2026 negotiations to make ourselves a little bit more competitive with our colleagues over at the port?
So those buckets of money are two separate things. Those are for retiree, um, fire and police. And so, um, the funding that we get from the state needs to be just for those purposes.
So that's, I'm talking about medical retirement.
Right. So the medical retirement that we have is, um, what we have in place for the left one, um, fire and police that we're required to, um, cover them for life?
Absolutely. And I'm wondering if we can.
The over, the overfunding can be reallocated back to a benefit for current employees, I think is what.
Right, right. So once that budget's done, it's done. Or once that fund, that pension fund is depleted, it's depleted. Because it says that we could, it would be moved to L1 retiree medical. And I'm wondering if we were to resurge the L1 plan or at least come up with a comparable medical retirement, could we still utilize this fireman's pension or an idea of that? Because it's overcrowded, I'm kind of wondering if medical retirement's on the table.
So the, those funds cannot be used for our current staff. They're in left two.
All right.
And so there's restrictions on how to use that. We have looked into, um, what the cost is. We had actuary, um, costed out, it's very significant cost to, um, be covering staff past retirement. So it's just not a feasible, feasible cost right now.
All right. Thank you so much.
Although I would say on that same note that I think a couple contracts ago, they, the City Open VIBA accounts for healthcare, um, kind of a healthcare savings that officers can use in retirement to kind of offset some of those costs.
Gotcha.
Councilmember Vaughn?
Yeah, thank you, uh, Council President. I have a question regarding the increased pay grades for, um, the police chief and deputy chiefs. Um, is this a net annual increase of 39,000 per year comparable to other positions around other cities? Have we done any comparison?
Yes, we did comparisons, um, with several of our neighboring cities and, um, we were significantly low compared to this.
Let me get to Councilmember Perez.
The definition of significant.
Let me get, and I'll come back to you, Councilmember Vaughn. Go ahead, Ruth.
I'm gonna take it because I know the time, time is an issue right now. So this is my final question. I really appreciate your, uh, 2025, 2026 goals for the Administration Division. I think they are very inspirational and I think describes very well the mission of your department. And I do appreciate it, how much take and effort to understand the needs of our community. Specifically, you put one of your goals, continue to find opportunities to build positive relationships, to engage and inform our community with a specific emphasis on those from marginalized community. I really like this goal because over time we have talked about this over and over and over and things in your department has changed constantly about how we accomplish this. And you have, um, now a advisory, is it advisory? No, it's not. It's.
For, for lack of a better term, you have an advisory council.
How these, since the establishment to today, have helped you or, or benefician to accomplish or see better goals to get to this point?
I think very much so. There, there really are sounding board, um, when it comes to having any ideas, including, um, our engagement, our engagement, um, plans going forward with community. Um, and really, uh, Deputy Chief Rutledge kind of oversees what that engagement's going to look like, particularly when it comes to most of our marginalized areas and, and developing a plan, um, for how we're gonna take care of those.
Thank you.
Councilmember Vaughn, you wanted to ask your question?
Yeah, just, just a follow-up to what was, um, mentioned in terms of the, um, comparison with other cities.
I can share the comparisons.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
Everybody.
All is adjourned. Thank you, guys.
Thank you all.